Testing, testing. This is a test. This is a test of the... Blah, blah. Is that gonna be loud like... Oh, is that from the TV? Oh, okay. So, Marlene, we know that the TV is working now. So, everything's good? Okay.
Thank you. The building is. It needs some renovations. It's an older building. And it's just a lot of light. You know, the lady in the corner with the rose. Her daughter is pretty much there. And you're gonna fire her out. The developers don't want to pay them what she was. You're in the three of them. So, it's a tough call. I don't see it happening. It's probably gonna sit there a while. So, well, have you get it?
Yeah, thank you.
No problem. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the floor. The floor of the floor. Good.
Good evening. If you desire to address the council tonight, please complete a request to speak form at the entryway and give it to the city clerk and you will be called upon at the appropriate time during the meeting. This time, I will call to order City of Granteras City Council Meeting for September 26, 2017. And I have down here that we have a... an invocation by somebody. Are you Pastor Steve Daley of Kingdom Life Fellowship? Thank you, Pastor Daley. Please come forward and if you would, please stand for invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by City Manager Harold Duffy.
Thank you for the invitation. Lord God, we thank you so much for this council, the leaders of this city. We pray your continued blessing on them. Give them wisdom tonight in all the decisions that are made. May they be to your glory and honor, because we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please run over your heart. Please face the flag. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, commissioned and divided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Daley. I appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you, City Manager Duffy. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Reiners.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Protem Robles.
Present.
Mayor McNaboe.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Under special presentations, we do have a proclamation tonight. Hopefully, I can see it. All right, tonight, we are... The City of Granteras is offering a proclamation for the Binoational Health Week. We've done this in the past, and I think the last time we did it was actually a couple of years ago. So, whereas the Secretariates of Health and Foreign Affairs of Mexico, the Ministries of Foreign Affairs of Guatemala, Honduras, Colombia, Ecuador, and Peru, the Institute for Mexicans Abroad, and the Mexican Social Security Institute, the United States Mexico Border Health Commission, and the Health Initiative of the Americas, a program of the University of California at Berkeley School of Public Health have recognized the necessity of improving access to health services for the underserved Latino population in the United States of America. And whereas, according to the 2010 United States Census, this country is home to more than 50.5 million people of Latina origin. And whereas improving the health of mobile populations requires multiple approaches to service design, delivery, funding priorities, and most fundamentally, requires strong binoational commitment. And whereas binoational health weeks reflect coordinated efforts to improve the quality of life of underserved populations by expanding their access to health care, increasing their health insurance coverage, and reducing their unmet health needs. And whereas the City of Granteras acknowledges the many organizations and volunteers collaborating in the organization of health fairs and educational health workshops, now therefore be it resolved that I, Darcy McNaboe, Mayor of the City of Granteras, along with my fellow council members proclaim the weeks of October 2nd through 23rd, 2017 as binoational health weeks in honor of these efforts to improve public health presented this 26th day of September 2017. And this will be sent to the coalition that is behind this effort. So, thank you, Madam City Clerk, for putting that together for us. And we will move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon at one time by the city council without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. We have four items. We have three items. One will be read by title. Is there anybody that would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, I will... I will recognize a motion if anyone has one to offer.
Your motion for approval of the consent calendar. And then read by title on item number three.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Granteras, California repealing and replacing Chapter 15.18 California Fire Code in its entirety.
All right, thank you. So, we had a motion by Councilmember Wilson and a second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Reiners, Hussey, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
All right, thank you. So, we'll open public comment, and this is an opportunity for people to speak on items not on the agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the council may not discuss or act on any item on the agenda but may briefly respond to the statements made or ask a question for clarification. I may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment or may request an item be agendized for a future meeting. And I see that we have a request to speak. Thank you. Mr. Jeffrey McConnell.
For the record, Jeffrey McConnell, 2175 Walden Avenue. Kind of response to the letter that I wrote to the council a couple of weeks ago. I was thinking about it, and I was gonna kind of request... I don't wanna call it a moratorium of such, but I don't, as I said in the letter, I don't wanna see all these people who are other people who are getting into the natural growing of their own veggies or the natural or the sheep next door to me. I don't wanna see them be harassed or anything to that effect. So, I don't know if I wanna... Can the council can have some kind of consent agreement? Like I said, I don't wanna call it moratorium because that's just so involved to just kind of keep off the backs of everybody until the zoning things and change, or maybe we address this in general plan. Because one of the issues I brought up in speaking with staff was, you know, as far as growing vegetables. Where can you grow vegetables? And the response basically was, well, basically, you can do it in residential. Now, I said, well, okay, show me in the code where it says that. They don't exist. So, it doesn't say you can, it doesn't say you can't. So, I just kind of was asking that maybe the council can come up with something to just kind of like put everything on hold until... until this is all resolved, basically. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for their communications. We'll start with Councilmember Reiners.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank everybody who came out tonight, and I would also like to just make a quick mention of how glad I was to see our volunteers recognized last week. Volunteerism is an integral part of any community operation. They can... Volunteers can fill in holes where budgets cannot get to, and also it builds community spirit and makes it a better place. And it's one of the many things that separates Granteras from some other places. So, I was really glad to see that happen, and I was glad to see the turnout. That's all.
Councilmember Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to thank staff...
I also like to thank staff who came out tonight and our residents and the volunteers. It was a great event. It was actually on my birthday, so I couldn't think of a better way to spend my birthday. But I thank the staff for putting it together, too. That food was great. I think everybody had a good time. And like Councilmember Reynars said, you know, the volunteer is what makes this city. You know, we all were in their shoes, we all still volunteer, but that's what makes this, like I always said, Granteras so grand. A couple of things, I went to the League of Cities, and I have a big report, but I'm still working on that, so I'll probably be on the next meeting. It's about what we voted for, and it's pretty good information, so I don't want to cut anything out, so I'm still working on that. But one of the things that I focused on over there was the homeless problem in the state of California. I know we really don't have it here, but we're surrounded by it, and you just drive down the hill, or you see it around here, you see the problems that we're having and what we could have. And one of my biggest issues was, I know that the City of Orange is clearing out the Santa Ana River, and they're pushing those homeless encampments, so I think they're going to push them towards our area. That's what usually cities do, they clear out one area and they push it to another city and give them the problem. The problem, thing with homelessness is not, not like back in the days where, you know, the economy was bad and we had the issues. This is mainly because of mental and then substance abuse. So they had a lady speaking from St. John's, she was there, and you could keep handing people money and keep trying to give them blankets and everything, but that's not going to help them, because they have generations of people being homeless. So one of the big things, they had a five-step program, and they held them accountable for what to do and tried to get them jobs and job placements. So that seemed to be the best success, and of course, the state's helping out with the programs on there. So that's just a little bit about that. Couple other things, I went to the county fair, first time I've been there in years, and one of the things that I really liked about it was going to the farmer's market and seeing, you know, the vegetables being grown in the different areas. It kind of reminded me back of my childhood, because I grew up in rural Fontana, and we had ducks, chickens, and rabbits, and that was just a common thing to do. So it's really neat, and you think about where we came from, and then the fresh vegetables being grown. So I really enjoyed that part. And I also attended the Sheriff Rodeo, you guys did an awesome job. I don't think I would ever get on one of those horses. If I did, you know, might fix my back for a second, but then again, I might go out. So it was a really good family event, you know, thank you guys for putting that on. It was really, really neat thing. And basically, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. God bless.
Councilmember Wilson.
I'd like to thank everyone for being here. Also, last week when we had our special meeting, it was a thrill to see all the volunteers be recognized here about a year, a year and a half ago or so. I asked the question about emergency operations, because we were going to incorporate, we're going to reinstitute our CERT situation and incorporate some of the folks from the Emergency Operations Committee into that. And I felt as if it was, you know, not only necessary, but also important to, you know, notice the people that had put so much work into the circumstance, and there were some moving operations and so on. And so I was glad to see that take place, and I, you know, also, you know, I know what it takes to be able to serve on the planning commission, and so that's kind of near and dear to my heart. So it was a good thing, it was a good culmination, and it's definitely a good thing for us to continue doing. Kind of a goofy, a couple of goofy things. I'm not exactly sure where to bring these up, so I thought I'd do this now. You know, I've gone through, you know, a few areas and say, all the way across the country. And Granteras has its own high school. And yes, it's not a college, but who cares? Bottom line is, is that we're looking for city identification, and one of the things I thought that we might want to give some thought to is, let's put a GT on the mountain someplace. You know, we're going to have a park, and we're going to be able to get to it, so let's put a GT on there. And maybe even a few lights, and just so that people can understand that there's a difference between, you know, San Bernardino and Riverside, and it's called Granteras. So, just a thought. The other thing is, is we have a noise element in our general plan, and it definitely has to do with zoning and different conditions that are instituted on new projects. So projects, sometimes depending on the size of it, might be subject to it, depends on where it is in relation to large arterials. But I've noticed that over time, and Mr. Wolf and I have had a little bit of conversation about this, it seems to me that Barton Road has a couple of funny personalities, and one of those has to do with the fact that it goes downhill if you're going westbound. And, you know, we've tried to take care of truck noise in relation to that sometimes, but that's usually ignored sometime after 6:00 PM. A lot of little cars make a lot of noise, and a lot of motorcycles make a lot of noise. And I just happen to be in one of those kinds of spots, and we have a natural amphitheater in Granteras. So no matter where you are in that natural amphitheater, you're going to get that. And I'm not exactly sure why that's not an issue anymore, because it's our quality of life. We want a little, a peaceful little community, and yet we let people race through our, through our community and all the way as far as down, you know, close to the freeway. And, I mean, it sounds like a horn half the time, and I don't understand it. So it would seem to me that maybe we might want to take a look at that. In the same kind of range, a long time ago, not a long time ago, but probably 10 years ago, our traffic engineers recommended, kind of in with the council at the time, it'd be a good idea to change the speed limit up 10 miles an hour on Barton Road. We are soon going to have a freeway off-ramp that's going to go eastbound. And in that, I can't think that it's going to slow the quantity of traffic down. In fact, studies say, no, that it is actually going to accelerate the amount of traffic. So let's slow her down. I mean, at least take a look at it. Forty-five miles an hour means everybody's going 55. All right? I mean, isn't that true? So if we're looking for a reason for people to slow down, maybe and look at their businesses, why didn't we jack up the speed limit? Makes no sense. So just a couple of things on my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Protem Robles?
Yes, thank you, and everyone's sick in my home. I was sick last week, and now I have a different kind of illness I'm trying to attend to. So I want to thank the volunteers. Even my own daughter-in-law didn't even get to have me here to recognize her efforts on the city. I appreciate everyone's efforts, and I'm sorry I could not be here. I also attended the League of Cities from September 13th to 15th. The principal seminars I attended were on ethics, and it was about how public elected officials should be ethical in all their behavior. You shouldn't have any law that is on the books to dictate what our behavior is, that we should understand what ethics are and practice them throughout the course of our duties. I also got, were required to have two hours of harassment prevention training, and I did fulfill that, and I have that for the city clerk to have, so to verify that I did that. On the 21st, I attended the City Manager and Executive Assistant, Assistant City Manager, the National Association of Industrial Professionals, a half-day conference, and it was quite interesting to listen to them talk about their challenges they have in developing business and industrial properties in Southern California, and it was a very educational experience for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Welcome back. I hope you're feeling better soon. I hope the rest of your family is. We did miss you last week. All right, I want to make the announcement that I meant to make at the beginning of the meeting. We are currently working on the technology in our chamber, so if you are watching at home, you will notice that there is one camera that is not working. But I'm told that we have our side cameras that are working, and that there is audio, although it does need some help, but we are continuing to work on upgrading the technology in this room, so please bear with us. And any feedback that you have, the city staff is interested in knowing, because as we do change things out, we want to make sure that we're getting it right. So thank you for your patience on that. On September 14th, I attended the San Bernardino County Transit Authority Metro Valley Study Session. They combined the study session with the Transit Committee, since the Transit Committee was not going to have a quorum. So on consent calendar for project delivery for both the study session and the transit, we received and filed construction contract change orders to ongoing SBCTA construction contracts with Sully Miller Construction, Riverside Construction Company, Flatiron West, and Shimick Construction Company. We also reviewed and recommended for final approval the release of, request for proposal for the procurement of the Mount Vernon Viaduct Project Management Construction Management Services. Under Air Quality Traveler Services and Transit and Transportation Programming, we did a whole lot of reviewing and recommending for final approval. One was the Riverside County Transportation Commission Ride Share Trip Reduction in 511 Programs effective July 1st through June 30th, 2018. These are programs that we work on as a county in cooperation with Riverside County, and so they do a lot of the program management, and then we give our share of the funding. We looked at a budget amendment for fiscal year 2017-18 for the Transit Right-of-Way Management, and this was an increase to the Valley Local Transportation Funds. We authorized the Executive Director to sign a, to execute a contract with the County of San Bernardino to define roles and responsibilities of each agency. To accommodate a portion of the Santa Ana River Trail as part of the Redlands Passenger Rail Project, they will be putting in a platform that will support the passage in the Santa Ana River Trail as that Redlands Passenger Rail Project goes forward. Also, we looked at the HDR Engineering Incorporated Contract, which was Amendment Number Four to the Redlands Passenger Rail Project. Also, for the Redlands Passenger Rail Project, we recommended the Addendum Number Four to the Final Environmental Impact Report. We found that it was appropriate and consistent with the Public Resources Code and the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and recommended that for approval. Further on the Redlands Passenger Rail was the Final Environmental Impact Report dated March 4th, and the refined, we asked that the board find and approve that this would move forward as described in Addendum Four. And lastly, we reviewed and recommended for final approval a contract with Michael Baker International for Fiscal Year 2015 through 17 Transportation Development Act Triennial Performance Audits. I also attended the quarterly San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District Advisory Commission on Water Policy. We heard presentations from Bear Valley Mutual Water Company, and it's interesting, the Bear Valley Mutual Water Company is actually down in the valley, it is not up in Bear Mountain. But they do a lot of agricultural water delivery. We had an update on the I-Efficient Program. This is a program that we are looking at regionally to help people to understand ways that they can conserve, getting the message out there that much of the water that is used in households is used outside. About 70% of the water that is used is outside versus 30% that is used inside. A lot of times, the programs for conserving focus on the things that we can do inside our homes to save water, and not that we shouldn't do that, but there are many ways outside our homes that we should be looking at conserving as well. What they found with the I-Efficient Program, they had a marketing company that was helping them to get the message out, and when they looked at the results from last, or last year versus the year before, they found that the information that they had been putting out there resulted in fewer people recognizing the program. And so as they move forward on a new marketing program, they actually are looking at hiring a new marketing company to get the message out there. We heard an update on the California Water Fix and the update on Groundwater Sustainability Council. We also were given a monthly statement of how our water is, our groundwater is doing locally, and it is doing, it is in much better shape than it was based on some of the rains that we had locally. However, we still are considered to be in a drought, and so if you want to look up I-Efficient Program and find ways that you can continue to conserve, that is very much encouraged. And then that is all I have for tonight. We will move back to our agenda with item number four, which is the Granteras Active Transportation Plan Project Update. I have Sandra Molina, Planning and Development Services Director. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Council may recall that in March of this year, the council approved a contract with KTUA to prepare the city's first-ever active transportation plan. The plan looks at connecting pedestrian and bike connection points to schools, to commercial centers, to recreational areas. The city contracted with KTUA. Joe Punzalan is the project manager, and he's here this evening to give the council an update of where we're at with respect to the plan preparation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As Sandra stated, my name is Joe Punzalan with KTU Plus A, and I was here earlier in the year, giving kind of an overview of the project and the steps that we're going to entail for this project. So we're about six months into the plan already, and so I will kind of go through. Would go through. Oh, there it goes. A quick overview of the project, where we stand, and the next step. So as Sandra mentioned, it is a Caltrans-funded project with about a year, year and a half timeframe to get this complete. One of the goals is really to identify deficiencies in the bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, so it's looking at existing conditions, analysis, those types of, thank you, and those types of analysis as we move forward. And then we're going to go into the recommendations, looking at improvements to the bicycle and pedestrian network, the individual infrastructure that make those connections to parks, to schools, and to retail throughout the city, and really also to the Santa Ana River Trail and the adjacent cities as well. We are in the midst of our outreach right now. We've completed our first workshop, which was in Community Day way back in June. I'll go a little bit over, a quick overview of what occurred there. And we are starting to wrap up the school walk audit, so we've already held some meetings with all the schools, and we're intending to do at least one more walk audit in October with Terrace Hills, Terrace Field Elementary. And then as we go through the recommendations and we start to prioritize some of these projects, our goal is to come up with a couple conceptual designs that sets the city up for grant funding, something that helps a lot of the, especially with the SCAG grants, the ATP grants, and the Caltrans Sustainable Communities Grants. What we want to do is make sure that the city is sitting pretty when it comes to those grant opportunities, and the information is ready to go to fill out those grant applications. And then we'll be wrapping up the final active transportation plan. That will cover all the bicycle, all the pedestrian, safe routes to school, and those priority projects. Just to kind of go overview what we've found here in the City of Granteras. As far as existing conditions, we've mapped the city in terms of locations of the bike routes and the bike lanes that are in the city. So you see about three miles of bike lanes within the city, and about, just under one mile of a bike route along Barton Road. And then the difference would be bike lanes are this lane striped on the road, and the bike route is really just a signed route. And our goal is to really expand this network throughout the city. And then we actually went and looked at the missing sidewalks throughout the city, so this is a data inventory that we've collected for this project, looking at where sidewalks are missing, looking at where some of the curb ramps are missing throughout the city, and making some recommendations as we move forward the project. And this is all data that's going to be coming back to the city, so as the city, as you're moving forward with capital improvement projects and looking at other projects to improve bicycle and pedestrian facility, you'll have the data ready to go. And we did some sophisticated modeling for this project. Typically, it doesn't, it's sometimes depending on the grant applications in the cities, they'll do higher analysis for their active transportation plans. We, and that was one of the goals here, is to make sure we have a data-driven approach on top of the public outreach, to really decide where, to really come up to where those recommendations are to go. So we produced a propensity model, or really a bicycle and pedestrian priority model, looking at somewhere around 40 inputs to really highlight where those needs are within the city, and this is kind of what you see here, the darker purple is showing, where some of the infrastructure and some of the improvements will tend to be made and prioritized as we move forward. We're also looking at some analysis that is kind of on the best practices of bicycle and pedestrian and active transportation planning, looking at levels of comfort for the cyclists, what streets are conducive for kids to ride, and what are conducive for more adults to ride. So we wanted to look at that analysis as well throughout the city for both a bicycle, for both the bicyclists and actually for pedestrians as well. So we, we developed a pedestrian level of comfort, looking at those facilities while looking at intersections that are difficult, difficult to cross and the lack or presence of sidewalks. We also did safety analysis. So within the last 10 years, there's about 14 collisions that occurred in the city, mostly pedestrians and about four by bikes, but fortunately, no fatalities. These are all things that is important when you're writing a grant application and really for analysis when you're, when you're designing these plans. And so what, our biggest outreach to date is Community Day. So we set up a tent with the city out at Richard Rollins Park. And that was actually a fun, fun time, about five hours we were out there. We did a helmet giveaway. So every half hour, we were able to raffle off a helmet and we had some, you know, we had a lot of people hanging out, waiting to hopefully get their numbers called. And so fortunately, we had a lot of kids there and they were able to get a lot of the helmets as well that we gave away. We gave out bike lights, but primarily, we had a lot of people fill out surveys. We had our outreach team going out to the various booths, getting, filling out surveys, encouraging them to come to our booth and provide us input on how to make walking and biking better in the city of Grand Terrace. And then like, as I mentioned, we're wrapping up some of our, our safe routes to school components. We did a couple walk audits in the, in the spring and we're wrapping them up this fall. We just actually did Grand Terrace High School last week with a walk audit there. By the way, Sarita Reynolds over at the school is awesome. She's been absolutely a dream to work with and really to help us get a lot of our outreach and our, our schedule, our scheduling down to, to conduct all these walk audits. And I just also want to give you a quick summary of the surveys that we had conducted. We have an online survey, both a questionnaire and a mapping survey as well. So we were able to get input from various, various sources and it at least extends our reach into the city and even regionally to get some input on walking and biking in the city. And as you, as you probably already all know, car driving is the, the most prevalent mode of transportation within the city of Grand Terrace. Where would you like to see, one of the general questions, where would you like to see better pedestrian bicycle routes? Two, schools was number one with parks number two. And then really shopping centers number three, kind of the three main attractors within the city. So it was no surprise, but it was, you know, the schools and parks were, really are, was one of the main things that people wanted to, to, to walk to. What would make walking better? Continuous sidewalks. Continuous sidewalks, street lighting, and, and really wider sidewalks just to, for the kids to, to get around the city to feel safe. And biking as well, bike lanes on the street, something that's maybe separated from the cars rather than sharing the road with the cars is something residents have told us about, even the, even bike paths. So the Gage Canal is a, a prime opportunity to do something there to really get a nice, really safe and connected, separated bike path as a north-south direction within the city. So where we're currently at is looking at, we've compiled all the data. We're actually still compiling some of the data and the input we received from the schools last week. So right now, we have a list of general projects that we're looking into, primarily corridors that connect throughout the city. We're working with, with Sandra and her team to, to kind of vet some of those projects. We're going to do a couple more steps of analysis to, to really, to really get through this portion of it. So what you see here is kind of just a preliminary, preliminary idea of where some of these routes are going to go. But we are going to go into a little bit more analysis in terms of the feasibility of some of these corridors and then prioritizing them. And then we're going to then wrap up with a safe routes to school component, which is not only going after ATP or other urban greening grants, those type of things, a safe routes to school ones will be able to be packaged so you can go after additional safe routes to school grant on top of ATP. So we're really trying to provide guidance and material so you have a plethora of options as far as grant opportunities is concerned. So where we're at now, once we go through and vet the projects, we're going to prioritize them, one, two, wherever how many projects we end up with. We're going to go through that process and then submit a draft plan that will have the prioritized projects, it will have the safe routes to school component, our outreach summary. It's also going to have the, the, the two preliminary corridor designs in there as well. So again, the two, two conceptual designs are really going to be something that's, we're going to incorporate into the draft, but really is going to be an appendix that can be used for applications. And our biggest, our biggest upcoming event will be in the winter, most likely in the spring. We're shooting for like a February, maybe March timeframe for our last workshop and we want to invite you all to that workshop. It's going to be open to the public. We want, we want, we want the residents and businesses of Grand Terrace to come out and look at these two corridors that we're going to be designing, get their final feedback on that, and look at the plan in general. If we've missed anything, we can go back, add a few more routes, add a few more recommendations here and there. We really want this final workshop to be open and inviting for everybody. We intend to, to look at all the routes, the projects, outreach summary, those types of things in that workshop. And then the final plan, when our contract with Caltrans is complete, will be final plan around spring, 2018. So with that, answer any questions?
Thank you. You say your last name, Punzalan?
Punzalan, yeah.
All right. Thank you so much for your report. I understand that you came a, a little bit of a distance to be here tonight, so I'm glad that you made it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does staff have any questions or does council have any questions of, of Mr. Punzalan at this time? All right. You wowed us.
Okay.
I look forward to your final results and to the workshop that you have coming up.
Yeah, we will, we'll send an announcement. Once we have that date pinned down, we'll make sure everybody here gets an announcement and to the residents of the city. So it should be a good turnout.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And this is a receive and file, so I'm going to move forward to our next item, which is City Manager Communications.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'd like to share my report this, tonight with the Sheriff's Department. Wolf is going to give his first and second quarter 2017 update.
Mayor, Council, Lieutenant Doug Wolf, oversee operations for patrol for the city of Grand Terrace. I got the clicker. Now I made the font bigger, so I hope everybody will be able to see it this time. Again, I'll be doing the first and second quarter of 2017, but I'll also be comparing it to the first and second quarter of 2016. Yeah, that's a little better. This here is a, right here is first quarter 2016, first quarter 2017. As you can see, first quarter 2017 is slightly higher. And then it goes to second quarter 2016 compared to second quarter 2017, which slightly is a little lower. And then our, our totals at the end, and again, the reason why I'm explaining is this way, all the slides will be for a few minutes here. So as we can see, our Part One Crimes Trends is down slightly in 2017. Part Two Crimes, again, Part One over, I'm sorry, first quarter compared to 16 to 17, 17 is substantially lower. And then second quarter 16 and, and second quarter 17 is slightly higher. I don't know if you guys can read those numbers. And the totals for 2017 is, again, for Part One, or for first and second quarter is 179, or 175 compared to 206 for the same period 2016. So again, slightly lower. Deputy reports, again, this is comparing first and second quarter. First quarter 2016 compared to first quarter 2017, it's up of just under 100 reports. And then 2016, the second quarter 2016, 2017, up substantially in 2017, about double, about 400. So compared between 2016 and 17, 2016 during those quarters, there's 512. During 2017, it's 753 reports taken. Calls for service. First quarter, this is pretty much all the way across the board, right around 3,000 or a little more. So it is slightly lower, I'm sorry, slightly, slightly higher in 2017. At 6,425 in 2017 and 6,325 in 2016. Traffic collisions. First quarter 2016, there were eight. First quarter, or first, first quarter 2017, there were nine. Second quarter 2016, there was 14. Second quarter 2017, there was eight. So between 2016 and 2017, it went from 22 in 16 to 17 in 2017. This is arrests for first and second quarter. First quarter 2016, there were 75 arrests. First quarter 2017, there were 64. And second quarter 2016, there was 101. And second quarter 2017, there was 136. The total for 2016 during those quarters was 176. And during 2017, there were 200. This is citations for those quarters. First quarter 2016, there was 305. First quarter 2017, there was 63. Second quarter 2016, there was 131. And second quarter 2017, there was 212. For a total of 2, 2, 2016, there was 436. And total of 2017, there was 275. These are the response time, again, during those quarters. The first column there is the response times for 2016 compared to the next column, which is 2017, slightly up. And then moving over to 2000, from 1:57 to 2, 2 minutes 22 seconds. To 2016, we had 36 seconds. And 2017, there was 37 seconds response time. And we got to keep in mind that these emergency calls in a three-month period, because that's what these quarters are, are three months, there might be five. So one of them will throw it for a loop, just like what we have there. Dispatch to on-scene, 2016, 5 minutes 36 seconds. 2017, again, this is first quarter, 4 minutes 44 seconds. 2016 second quarter was 2 minutes 15 seconds. And 2017, we're 2 minutes 20 seconds on the second quarter. Priority one calls. 2016 first quarter was 3 minutes 20 seconds. And 2017 first quarter was 3 minutes 50 seconds. 2016 second quarter was 4 minutes 23 seconds. And 2017 second quarter was 4 minutes 58 seconds. And dispatch to on-scene, 2016 first quarter was 7 minutes 30 seconds. And 2017 first quarter was 6 minutes 38 seconds. 2016 second quarter was 6 minutes 34 seconds. And 2017 second quarter was 8 minutes and 4 seconds. And then there, they have the average there, which are all pretty close, within a tenth of a second of each other. 2016, 17 first quarter were both 27 minutes from the time the deputy arrived on scene to the time that they cleared the call. And then the 2016 and 2017 second quarter was 26 minutes and some seconds there. So pretty close. Any, any questions for me?
Thank you, Lieutenant Wolf. Does council have questions? Councilmember Hesse?
Thank you, Lieutenant Wolf. Can you tell me, just to let the residents know, what the difference between the Part One and the Part Two crime is?
Sure. Part One crime is like homicide, burglary, rape, forcible rape, grand theft, and so forth. Part Two crimes are going to be petty theft, vandalism, drug arrests, the, the more minor offenses.
Any other questions, Councilmember Reiners?
Yes, thank you for that report. On the first two slides, Part One and Part Two crimes, what are the data points? Is that when the individual is charged?
Yes.
So it's, it's a charged crime at that point?
Correct.
Do you see a correlation between the reduction in charged crimes and the increase in the reports taken? Is there a connection there, do you think? Because I see your reports went way up.
Yes. Well, I mean, our deputies are out there working much harder. We do have, we did add that additional personnel since, since January. They've been creating a lot of work for themselves, a lot of those. And, and as you'll see, the Part Two crimes are up. It's because of those arrests. They're catching them in stolen cars, they're catching them in, with possession of drugs or, or needles or whatever, which are all Part Two crimes and which causes the paperwork, the additional reports, and the higher arrest numbers.
And there can be reports without a crime, correct?
Absolutely.
So that, that could be the difference as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Wilson?
Do you see any correlation? I, I can see that we've got about a 1 in 30 ratio in arrests versus calls. And what would you attribute that to? Because the regular Joe that's looking at this report would probably say, wow, 6,500 calls, which we pretty well know means that there's just a lot of people on the phone. And then 200 arrests. Just seems odd.
Well, Grand Terrace, they do have residents that are, are, do make lots of calls to the police. And being the city, of course, we respond to those calls and they don't really amount to, they, they just, just need to help them with something. That is one thing that I've noticed working here at Grand Terrace, is the, the residents here do rely on us for some of the things that we can just help them through without taking a report.
Kind of reminds me a little bit of Andy and Mayberry. I mean, you guys end up doing pretty much everything as all the city managers.
Yeah.
Okay. I understand. And that's great because we've got a little community.
We do.
So that kind of a, a help is a wonderful thing, there's no doubt. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you very much for your report.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that and it's good to see that the response times are being held down as well. Mr. City Manager, did you have anything further for your report?
Yes, I do, Mayor. A couple items. So this is kind of gives a council update on where we are with the 2017 Grand Terrace Dog Park Endowment Fund. So we, our total goal was about $14,000. This is primarily due to selling the benches in the parks and the donation given to us by the foundation. So at this point in time, we have, we're half of the benches sold and we're about $9,000 to our $14,000 goal. There's still benches available and you can get online and you can look at the map and it'll tell you where you can actually, the location of the bench if you'd like to purchase them. I think there's one $500 bench left and the remaining are, I believe, $1,000 and one $1,500 bench. So just to remind the citizens that we have started our new yard sale sign program. When you sign up for a yard sale, you're, you pay your $5 for the yard sale permit. If you'd like to have five of these yard sale signs, they have an erasable little marker here, whiteboard here, you can put your address and arrows on them. You'll get five for a deposit of $50. You can return those five signs and you get your $50 check back and, and that's, there's no cost for the sign. Next is something that we've been tracking. Next is something that we've been tracking for a while is the city's Facebook presence. We are, the cities in the Illinois Empire, we are, sorry, Seminole County, we are number four in terms of followers versus percentages. And so what I'm going to do too this week, I'm going to contact the city managers in the Seminole County area and I'm going to let them know that we're number four, but our goal is to be number one. So we're going to have a little healthy competition going on in terms of followers and information on Facebook.
All right.
Next, coming up this Saturday, September 30th, from 8 to 12 p.m., we're going to have the Community Cleanup Day. This is where you can bring your bulky items like couches and things of that particular nature that you can't quite put in the trash can. So you can bring them to City Hall and we'll be here. Burt Tech will be hosting the event here in the City Hall parking lot. That was very successful the last time we had this. And so we'll be from 8 a.m. to 12 p.m. on Saturday. Next, this is an item that we put on our Facebook page and it was the refurbishment of the Terrace Hills Middle School pool. And what we did was we asked the question, so you remember, to share your memories. Remember the time when you were, when you grew up in Grand Terrace and at the pool? And we were pleasantly surprised at the number of comments that we received on Facebook regarding people's comments about how they grew up at the pool, remember their parents dropping them off and being a part of the swim team was great. They even gave us pictures of when they were at the pool. Crystal Eggers, the NBC, former NBC weather person, liked the page. She said she remembered her time. So here's a picture, a couple pictures of some of the students that were there in the 70s and the 80s at the pool. So the pool is in working order again. We're working on getting lifeguards to be able to provide that swim program. At a minimum, it's going to be a summer swim program. The school district will probably offer swim classes at the middle school, so it's going to become a vital part of the community again. And I believe with that, that's the end of my report. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you. With that, we will recess to closed session. We have a closed session. This is a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to section 54956.8 of Government Code. It's in reference to property. Grand Terrace Child Development Center located at 22400 Barton Road, number 200. Grand Terrace, California. Agency negotiator, G. Harold Duffy. City manager, negotiating parties, Family Services Association. Under negotiation price and terms of payment. For those of you that will not be with us when we come back, we, our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 10th, 2017 at 6 p.m. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding this meeting. We are in close, we are in recess at this time. Our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 10th, 2017 at 6 p.m.
I need something. Yeah, I'm used to calling the range. I'll call you Big O.
I'm going to start kicking you. I think that's fun. All right, we will reconvene to open session. The city met and closed session at Conference with Real Property Negotiators and we gave directions to staff, no reportable actions at this time. And I understand that City Manager has one further piece of information to communicate. So, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. One of the things that we're trying to do is to ensure that when the council members have a request, that we make sure that City Manager understands for that future direction. So tonight, what I heard, which we'll put on our report backlog, is that we want to examine the feasibility of putting some kind of an icon or marker on the Blue Mountain that indicates Grand Terrace, give us some signature. There's also a discussion about noise and traffic calming measures to be included to kind of slow down traffic on Barton Road. And so that'll also go on the report backlog. Councilmember Hussey also talked about the homeless issue and so we'll make sure that we put that on the report backlog. So I did want to take this opportunity to ask the council, was there anything else that they would like to have on the future agendas?
Councilmember Wilson?
Let me clarify, wouldn't be traffic calming measures on Barton Road, it would be, let's look at the feasibility. We look at the feasibility, we don't need to spend a lot of time with it, whether or not that was a good move to change the speed limit from 35 to 45. Most commercial districts have a 35 mile an hour speed limit and given the fact that we're going to have a roller coaster coming onto our main drag when the, when and if the Caltrans overpass ever gets finished, you know, we're just accelerating our problem so far as business visibility.
Yeah, and what I would do is if comments were based upon trying to slow the traffic down, looking, examining exactly if that change to the increased speed limit can be examined to look at the safety component of it.
Yeah, I know along Barton Road, it is two different speed limits. It's from the freeway to Mount Vernon, it's 40 and then past there, it's 45.
When I left last night, I looked at it because it was, the traffic was going 55 miles per hour right in front of City Hall.
And I believe that down, past Brentwood area, all right, well, yeah, it's 50, I'm not Brentwood, Westwood area. It used to be 55 all the way down and now it's 50. And then as you come up the hill, then it changed to 45 and...
Well, Public Works to an Engineer is warned on that to examine that for safety purposes.
Okay. Anything further?
That's it.
All right. The next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, October 10th, 2017 at 6 p.m. Agenda item requests will, must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you.